November eighteenth. Welcome, everybody, to the November eighteenth Town Council Work Session. At the record read that the entire Town Council was present. This time we'll do a pledge of allegiance.
What we just do the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, in liberty and justice for all.
You don't really need a motion to approve the agenda. Town Council vacancy interviews. Sharon, you want to bring in our first candidate? Interactions with you and the candidate now, Holly.
Hello, Margaret. Hi.
Hi.
So the process for this evening is going to be a one and a half minute introduction. And then we're going to have a list of questions, the same questions for each candidate. And you'll have one, a one-minute time period to respond to each question. We are going to time it just to be sure we're giving each candidate the same amount of time.
Wonderful. Thank you. Mask on or mask off?
I prefer the mask on.
Okay. Do you like to give an introduction?
Okay, thank you. All right. Um, well, I would say that I have had a thirty-seven year in corporate. This goes from information systems to internal audit, to process improvement, and a lot of project management. It basically covers that. It went from Manhattan through Poughkeepsie to England, to Switzerland, to New Jersey. And in twenty seventeen, finally, I got to move to Chesapeake Beach. And I do say finally because we knew we would move back from overseas and spent from twenty ten to two thousand twenty twelve looking for a community to move into. And when we found Chesapeake Beach, we bought our house in twenty twelve, but didn't return to the States until twenty fourteen, in which case I was working in New Jersey. So when we moved here, it was really a wonderful welcome back to where I've been waiting to move for a long time. I retired in twenty eighteen and since then have been doing various things around the community. I worked as the treasurer for Jug Bay. And I'm a WSA Stewart, watershed Stewart, with their program currently working on a project in North Beach. I was on the board of elections. And I've worked a bit on different volunteer activities for the Taste of the Beaches and the Dragon Boat Races and a few small things like that. My hobbies are bicycling, hiking, training well-shaped ponies, and painting, and food. Lots of food.
Thank you.
Okay. Our question number one is what unique perspectives, knowledge, skills will you bring to your role as a council member? And what can you tell residents about how you will serve them and the town?
My perspective's coming from industry. What I worked in, it was pharmaceuticals, banking, and utilities. So it covered a number of different areas that I've had to go through. And I don't think it's unique. My passion is the environment. And that is really where I like to see things happen and like to focus. So I really want to look at how we are treating our town here in the different places and how to keep the town vital without destroying the beauty of where we are. Because with my training in environmental things, it's very fragile land.
Thank you. Question two, what does the phrase "small-town charm" mean to you?
Me, it means I can walk down the street and know people. And I'm there. I see them. I see them frequently even now, the ones I recognize from different communities. It means having a place to go to by foot that I can get to safely and have an event, have a dinner, have a business I want to visit, have tea. Having all those things within a range where I can walk or bike and be able to see people I know is my small-town charm.
Question number three, do you consider yourself to be fiscally prudent? And if so, what would your priorities be if selected for Town Council?
I think I am very fiscally prudent. I think if you ask my children, they're going to tell you I am more than very fiscally prudent. Result of that was I was able to retire when I was fifty-eight. And so it was very nice to stop working and for money. Not working for money is very liberating. Working for things that don't have to worry about getting paid for is extremely liberating. I think how it comes to the town is looking at planning and cash flow and finances. My degree was in accounting, so I have also had a number of backgrounds with information systems in human resources and finance. So I've seen a lot of finance terms come and go and come through by installing computer systems. They think that looking at the income to the outgo and trying to decide what brings the most for what the town wants and questions from the town on referendums they want, what do they want to see happen? And I know that we've done surveys and had meetings on it. So hopefully, the people of the town will speak up for the kind of things they want to see, and we have to find if we can fund them.
Thank you. What is the biggest challenge facing our town in the next five years? And how would you address it?
I think the biggest challenge is figuring out how to keep the town longer than fifty years, which is where we keep hearing that we'll all be underwater. My house is actually on the bay plus townhouse, and we were totally flooded on that Friday storm. And I think figuring out how to keep the town vital without making that worse. And it can come worse in ways that you don't think of, but building a housing complex up a hill causes all the water to run downhill because there's no place else for the water to go. So I think managing that without completely stifling growth in terms of businesses and people who want to live here is one of our critical items for the next five years.
How have you been following Town Hall actions and issues? And what do you know about the town's current comprehensive plan efforts?
Um, so for the current planning and commission, the two that I'm most familiar with are the Walkability Plan because I'm going to walk to town, and the Planning Commission from the moratorium I attended, and then watching a bit of the presentation to the public on the Planning Commission. And that, I think, is getting that through in a way that it can be enforced and having a way to enforce it, whatever the town has decided should be between the Town Council and the Planning Commission, I think is something that will be one of the main topics for the next now and near near future.
Thank you. Last question, what would you do to support a vibrant, walkable Main Street? And do you feel our Main Street is healthy and walkable? If not, how might you improve it?
One of the things I find in the town is we don't have a regular Main Street. I think we might have to develop a Main Street. So, for example, the hill that leads down to two sixty to the park at the end may be a solution. But when we walk towards, for example, the plaza, it's not for me a town, a Main Street for the town. I mean, it is the Main Street that goes through the town, but it doesn't have that sort of Vermont charm of a Main Street. And I think what we could do maybe is start to look at where we can put businesses in places that are already built to have more places for people to go to get services done. For example, and we have a dry cleaner. It's fantastic. Maybe we could get a bakery. Maybe we could get a bike shop. Well, I do bike. You know, things like this where people can go locally and have a place to walk to. And I think having more sidewalks to get there. And I know from the lower side, but I've heard in the, during the Walkability and during the moratorium discussions, the people who are up on the hills and where the kids go to school, you can't get out of there. You have to walk on the side of the road, and it's not a fun road to walk on. So I think there can be a lot of improvements with that.
Yeah. Those are the questions, Mayor.
That's it, right?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Please stick around.
I'm sorry. Okay.
Hey, Kathleen.
Hi.
Holly will give you some.
Hi, Kathleen. How are you?
Hi.
So we're going to start with a one and a half minute introduction. And then we will have a list of six questions and then provide one minute of response for each candidate. We will time it. I'll try to allow you to finish your thought if you're getting close, but just when it's like, you know. So we can start with the introduction.
Can I take my mask off?
We're leaving.
We're asking everybody to keep their mask on.
Okay. All right.
Okay, we're ready.
First and foremost, I want to say thank you to the mayor and the Town Council for the opportunity to apply an interview for the vacancy to the Town Council. I've lived here for twenty-two years. I raised my family here. My children have gone to school locally, and through that time I've supported town events. I understand public service. I've been, I've served over thirty years, both locally and federally and in varying positions of increased responsibility as well as accountability and leadership. Also, for the past fifteen months, I've served proudly as a commissioner on the Planning and Safety, Planning and Zoning Commission. And should I be selected? I think it's an opportune time because the comprehensive plan has gone, been shown to the public, and now it's a matter of I could turn my focus on a more global perspective serving the town. Lastly, I'm a go-to person in my neighborhood. People find me approachable because of my career. I deal, I'm very diplomatic. I'm able to negotiate. I'm approachable and I listen, and that has bared itself out. Also, a elector for St. Anthony's as well as water captain for Save the Bay. But I'm very interested in serving and the residents of the town. And I'm also pleased to help diversify the council.
Thank you. Question number one, what unique perspectives, knowledge, skills will you bring to your role as a council member? And what can you tell residents about how you will serve them and the town?
Um, I think I bring a great perspective. As I said, I've had, I understand public service. I've served in locally and both federally. I also, I understand the town processes. Certainly, the Planning and Zoning Commission, I understand how it works. Very fair. I'm used to, I'm used to working with the public in very volatile crisis situations, and I remain calm and composed. I'm able to multitask. I'm very dedicated, and I'm committed to my work and to serving.
Thank you. Question number two, what does the phrase "small-town charm" mean to you?
Small-town charm means that the town retains its welcome. It's that the town isn't overdeveloped by either hotels or businesses, but that the people can come here, that they can enjoy the beach, that they could enjoy the bay, which I think is the great treasure of this area, and but not feel like it's bustling, that the traffic to get in and out of the town, that they can walk around freely and just enjoy, go to local restaurants, but yet not feel like, for comparison, like this is Ocean City, Maryland, and there's a great deal of traffic. And also, not only for those who visit the small-town charm, but for those who live here. And I think that's why people have come here, because it is a small town where we put up the flags for the Fourth of July, and it has that small-town charm feel.
Thank you. Next question, do you consider yourself to be fiscally prudent? If so, what would your priorities be if selected?
I do consider myself to be fiscally prudent. I think there are endeavors that I think that we do need to address. And I, and from what I can tell in the town's fiscal report by the auditor, that there are monies for the town to further address these issues. For example, the Walkability Study, that's been completed. And, you know, right now, it's very important, for example, that that would be addressed. Because I can tell you, although people swim at the beach without a lifeguard and there's a threat of safety there, it cannot be, it's not as great as crossing two sixty-one, which I do every day by the school. And I see families bringing nail, bringing their children there because of COVID. So I think it's really time that we enact some of, you know, that plan specifically. And transportation, so look, we just widened the roads. And I think it's important to address that, you know, these issues that will make our town more open, but yet at the same time not overdeveloped.
Thank you. What is the biggest challenge facing our town in the next five years? And how would you address it?
I'd say one of the greatest challenges is certainly the climate, the rising sea levels, the, you know, the nuisance flooding, the storm surge. I think that's a great consideration that we have to address. And I, you know, I think it's almost frightening when you think about in ten, fifteen years, Kellam Field could be underwater. And just looking at the local flooding from the recent storms, I think it's, that is a great, a strong priority. I also think, for example, the septic systems. There's two hundred and twenty-two homes that are still on septic. And I think as protection for the environment, it would be great if we could get them onto public water.
How have you been following Town Hall actions and issues? And what do you know about the town's current comprehensive plan efforts?
Um, I do follow the town. I listen to not only the work sessions, but also to the town meetings. And I've done that more frequently since I've been a member of the Planning and zoning. I am familiar with the comprehensive plan. I edit it, and I will take credit for that along with my colleagues. But, you know, I certainly have spent a great deal of time on the comprehensive plan, reading about it, reading about what other jurisdictions who are similar, as well as trying to understand the perspective of the council members and what their perspectives. And all in the same time, but looking at the hot issues like climate, septic, water, and the naval base, making sure the water is safe in the areas that are greatly impacting, like economic development.
And then the last question, what would you do to support a vibrant, walkable Main Street? And do you feel our Main Street is healthy and walkable? If not, how might you improve it?
Well, I don't, I think it's, Chesapeake Beach is great to walk in. I walk, as I said, all the time. I walk through my neighborhood, over through the townhomes. But I do think there's a true issue as far as navigating across two sixty-one. And I see it all the time, and I truly worry about that because I have neighbors who have four children, and she doesn't drive, so she every day takes all four children with her to drop off the two older. And I worry about, because sometimes the reality is you have to almost insert yourself to stop the traffic. There's no crosswalk marking even, so people don't, maybe they would pay attention if there was a crosswalk, but because there's not even that. So I do think that it's important. And as long as, as well as the gateway two sixty coming in, I think that certainly could be more attractive, and we could encourage revenue and stores, commercial development along that. And I think the Walkability Study also had plans to make that accessible walking as well.
Mayor, that's all the questions we have.
Thank you, Kathleen. If you don't mind, stick around.
Okay, no, thank you.
Right here. Thank you. Hello, how are you?
I'm well, are you?
Good.
Holly will start you out, sir.
Okay. So for each candidate, we're providing a minute and a half introduction. And then we'll have six questions. Each candidate is asked the same question, and there'll be an opportunity for a one-minute response. Okay, and it'll be timed. I'll try to give you the opportunity to finish your thought, though. I won't try to cut you off. And if you wanted to start with your introduction.
Grew up in Washington, DC, attended high school there. Spent most of my time in West Virginia in the summers, and then usually a week or so at Boy Scout camp, even at Roosevelt back in the sixties. Worked selling newspapers for the Washington Daily News, deliberate papers for the Washington Post. Worked a short period of time with Marion Barry where he extolled the virtues of staying in school and staying away from drugs and sex and all that. And then what he turned out to be was something else entirely different. But anyway, was a gardener at the Washington National Cathedral. That was my first introduction into landscape horticulture. And then gardener at sixteen hundred Pennsylvania Avenue under Fort Nixon and then Carter. Got my degree, got another degree, and retired from Maryland National Capitol Park and Planning Commission after thirty years of service there. I love the city, the town, I mean, and the county. Actually, involved in my church, had done three mission trips to Zimbabwe, Africa, after I retired in fourteen, I retired in fourteen, went to Zimbabwe in fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen. Skip eighteen, the pandemic happened, might go in August of twenty-two.
Thank you. So first question, what unique perspectives, knowledge, skills will you bring to your role as a council member? And what can you tell residents about how you will serve them and the town?
Take the second part of that question first. I love, like I said, I love the town. I love the county. And I want this town to be the best that it can be. So I will work as hard as I can, do everything that I can do to support the council and all of the goals that you have set out for yourself. What I bring is experience. I have worked with over two hundred-plus employees at one time in all kinds of skilled labor fields, administrative, graphic design, graphic arts. Let's see, I had carpenters, masons, electricians, greenhouse nursery. So I have all of that experience. I'm also a licensed tree expert, and so I have that as well. Mostly is what I have experienced dealing with people. That's the biggest thing that I bring to the table. Is that I know how to bring calm to organizations that are in chaos. And that's one of the things that was valued in all the jobs that I had.
What does the phrase "small-town charm" mean to you?
I love that. First of all, it means, it means home. It means a place of, a special place. It means a place of belonging. It's, it's, it's safe. It's gorgeous. It's beautiful. It says to people from the outside, I wish I lived there. I want to be there. And often I'm asked that question, how do you like it down here? How long have you been here? Why did you stay? And that's the other thing. It's about what values we have here in the town that attract other people who want to move into the town. It's easy to get around. We have lots to do. It's the water. It's the bay. It's the beach, and it's all about just wanting to be here and enjoying all that we have to offer here.
Thank you. Do you consider yourself to be fiscally prudent? And if so, what would your priorities be if selected?
I think that I am. Priorities would be to try to keep town spending, town taxes, as where they are probably right now. And maybe look for ways to redirect service so that there may be savings in other areas, in all the areas, actually. What I am very cognizant about is myself, a retired person on a fixed income. I would love to see if there was a way to, I don't know if home is the right word, but there were way to maybe fix it so that folks who have been here for a while, we could put a cap on what they actually have to spend in their taxes per annum. And I know they do that in, I want to say in Massachusetts. For years, they, they're capped at a certain amount of money that they have to, you know, spend on taxes. And so I would be working towards that kind of thing. And at the same time, look for ways that we could save funds in all the services that we provide to the residents of town.
Thank you. What is the biggest challenge facing our town in the next five years? And how would you address it?
There are a couple of challenges facing the town. We are right on the bay. We are the bay, and we have got to find ways to make that make it known that stuff that happens upstream from us affects us particularly. So a clean bay, cleaning up the bay, even if that means that we find ways to negotiate with other states that, you know, end up sending their pollutants down into our watershed. I think that's, that's, that's a big one there. I'm real big on finding a way to make this town walkable. When I say walkable, I mean not just in and around Rodden Real and Chesapeake Station. But, I mean, it ought to be, and I would mention to say that the state probably is, is working towards this, but a way to get down to sixty-one, to sixty-three. From one end of the town into North Beach, you can do it on one side, but you can't really safely do it on the other. School kids can walk on one side of two sixty-one, two sixty-three, but not on the other side. And so walkability is another area that I would look at. And then again, the financial aspects of what we do here in town, that's a big one. We're going to find, have to find ways to do more with the funds that we have. And this group here will be primarily responsible for making sure that that happens. Otherwise, we're going to tax ourselves out of oblivion, and it's not going to be happy. It's not going to be fun. And you have to control that somehow. So look for ways to do that. That's a big challenge as well.
Thank you. How have you been following Town Hall actions and issues? And what do you know about the town's current comprehensive plan efforts?
I have watched a little bit of the comprehensive plan. I like what I see. Of course, working with the counties to comprehensive plan where I was chair at the time. I know about plans, comprehensive plans, and they're only as good as the work that you put in them. So once it's set, it will be the responsibility of everyone to make sure that they are followed. The zoning regulations will have to follow the plan. And if not, then we're going to end up in a situation where development's out of control, or the opposite. There's not enough development to support the commercial needs of the residents in the town.
Thank you. And the final question, what would you do to support a vibrant, walkable Main Street? And do you feel our Main Street is healthy and walkable? If not, how might you improve it?
That's just a note. Again, I have to, that, there's a lot of work that needs to be done there. And I think a lot of that will have to come from state funding. I really do. Especially on the main course. It's not walkable as much as it should be, and not just the walkability. There's also the bike ability as well. I mean, if we really want to promote tourism and want to make this a town of destination, then folks who bring their bicycles ought to be able to ride their bicycles safely. So again, finding ways to find funding through grants or whatever, we would hopefully achieve that.
Thank you, and that's all the questions, Mayor.
Thank you, sir.
Please stick around. Thank you. Charlie will get you started.
How are you? So we're providing an opportunity for each candidate to give a one-and-a-half-minute introduction. And then we have six questions that are asked of each candidate, and we provide a one-minute response. It will be timed, but I'll try to provide an opportunity for you to finish your thought, try not to cut you off. So if you want to go ahead and start with the introduction.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Town Staff. I'm Richard Birch. I appreciate this opportunity to be considered for council. Currently, I'm the president of Chesapeake Village HOA. Have been on the board since four, five years now, and president for the past two years. Additionally, I'm a president of Board, Occupational Board of Maryland. And I have been for the past two years with that also. My wife and I, we moved to Chesapeake Beach in 2008. And I've loved it. We currently are raising three kids in this area. But in addition to having the, the HOA board, I've been on board for Fire Department prior to move, excuse me, move into here. So I've had the opportunity of working with public safety. As I was EMS chief at that time. So I've had the, again, the opportunity to work in public safety and, and meetings with the public, with council. Current work was, I'm, I'm our lead for our group, and I have been for the past five years. So I feel that I do have the worth, that work ethic to a team and make decisions along with budgeting that I've been used to with the HOA.
Thank you. Yeah. Okay, first question, what unique perspectives, knowledge, skills will you bring to your role as a council member? And what can you tell residents about how you will serve them and the town?
So like I said, working along with the other council members and listening to the public and the, the people out there talking, I think that's a big portion that I can bring. It's similar, currently reading a book about a executive from Starbucks. And the title of the book, "It's Not About the Coffee." This is a coffee business, and they're saying it's clearly about the people. So I feel that that is something that I feel like I would bring to the council.
And what does the phrase "small-town charm" mean to you?
Really like that "small-town charm." That's really what has kept us in Chesapeake Beach. The fact that, one, it's small, the, the community is pretty close. We have to keep that feeling to, obviously, to keep people in the, the town. But also the businesses, we don't have the large, big-box stores in the town, which is very nice. And I feel that that is a, a big part of what the, the council should consider having that small-town feel.
Thank you. Do you consider yourself to be fiscally prudent? And if so, what would your priorities be if selected?
Yes, fiscally prudent. Being proactive with things such as the infrastructure and the maintenance as opposed to being reactive. I think that helps out a lot of the spending. So the, the maintenance, the upkeep as opposed to letting it go and then spending it all at one time.
Thank you. Next question, what is the biggest challenge facing our town in the next five years? And how would you address it?
So a large part of it is what happened just recently is the rising of the water. That's a, a big problem in, in this area. And if, again, going back to being proactive, if we address it now as opposed to taking away land and, and the businesses and being reactive to it, I think that may save a lot of troubles in the future. So the, the rising of the water is a, is a big concern.
How have you been following Town Hall actions and issues? And what do you know about the town's current comprehensive plan efforts?
So talent, following Town Hall issues, subscribing to the, the new e-blast that come out, which I also, during our board meetings, promoted for people to do also. I'm sorry, what was the second part to that?
The town's current comprehensive plan, what do you know about the town's current?
Yes, comprehensive plan is just like any other plan. Everything starts with a plan before something happens. I know a big concern is the, the commercial, along with the residential buildings, the, the number of residents in the building. I know that's a big issue, and we still have to keep in mind that small-town feel, but also the business enhancing the commercial business as well, to keep, keep the, the, the members here, the public.
And the final question is, what would you do to support a vibrant, walkable Main Street? And do you feel our Main Street is healthy and walkable? If not, how might you improve it?
I'm a big supporter of the Walkable Committee, the, the, the plan. I would have fairly often conversations with Derek about this, that the fact that the sidewalk going from Chesapeake Village to beach is tremendously a, a highlight in my mind. Living in Bayview Hills where I could walk down to the town. And when we moved to Chesapeake Village, we didn't really have that. We had to cross the road to the beach to come around. It was a, it was a big deterrent, but I'm, I'm so happy that we're, we're getting that.
Thank you. And Mayor, that's all the questions.
Thank you, sir. If you don't mind, wait around a bit.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Don't mind, here we go. I think what I like to do before we cast our, our votes is to see if the, the council wants to have a quick lightning round. I'll begin if you don't mind this time, and then I'll start with Keith and work my way around. I, I just emulated that we have such four candidates that applied, and I'm impressed with all four, and I really thank them for applying.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I, I would wholeheartedly agree with that. I think there are some really qualified candidates, and I am happy this decision is going to be so hard.
Yeah, four very interesting council candidates. It is a, would be, it'll, is a tough decision, but that's a win for the town.
Agree with my colleague's comments. Good news is, I don't have to campaign against these people. It'd be a real challenge. Thank you.
Yeah, ditto, ditto to really all that. You know, I've sat on the other side of this once myself and have a new respect for how tough it is to, I mean, I don't remember all the candidates then, but there's certainly doing now, so.
Okay, very good. Let's, let's cast our first one. Oh, Val, I'm sorry, you know, I, I'm looking that way, and I'm saying, we're done. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Valerie.
No, I disagree and concur with those comments. These are for our Senate candidates, and I don't see how we can lose. I mean, we did well. We, we cannot lose in this. And they're so diverse in who they are, so it's good.
Thank you. Okay, now it's time to check, check three. Check three. Check three. Are you going to select them, Holly?
Yeah, six, five, three.
Yeah. Oh, I have four, three.
Yeah.
So. Okay, let me just do this. I'm going to make sure Sharon, because she's. Sorry about that.
Hey. Hartman, Beroll, and Kernan have advanced. First three on your list, Hartman, Beroll, and Kernan have advanced. This is a check, yeah, check two out of the three. A check two out of the, okay, does the council, are we good? Do, do we want to have any lightning round? We'll probably just say what we did last time, obviously. Okay, check two. We just put them up here, Holly. First thing about this is I can't see when somebody's smiling. I see your eyes twinkling, and, you know, being Irish, I know about the twinkling eye, so I'm thinking, she's smiling. He's just smiling. He's twinkling. All right. Clearly, it's not just an Irish thing.
Same?
She's gaited through and through.
And take him off again, too, right?
Okay, everybody? Everybody? I haven't used this gavel in a while. I, I just did. I got, I got a year's worth. Hartman and Kernan have advanced to the final two. We, we need one more sheet. Need one more sheet?
Oh, yes, Sharon's distributing it.
I, I don't get one. That's correct. Thank you. Thank you, Sharon. I was ready to grab one. Oh, I, you know, I didn't ask that. Does the council want to do a, a light? We can do that. I'll start with Valerie. And the two, I don't know what you want to say. This is being recorded for the public, by the way. One of the reasons for anonymity is these people are all our neighbors and friends and really don't want to, you know. You, Charlie?
I'd be happy with either as well. I want to address maybe an elephant in the room, but I'm, I'm just going to make it, just say this. Larry and I both live in Seagate, and so does Peggy. And I respect that some people may find that an overrepresentation of Seagate. I also feel that if you look at the history of Larry's time on the council and mine, that I can't remember an issue in which that's even a topic or a vote, which has ever been an issue. And the one that comes to mind that did directly affect Seagate was the vote on the moratorium. And the two people who actually voted against the moratorium were Larry and me, which I find kind of interesting if you consider Seagate as a factor in our decision. Clearly, it was not in that case. So I just offer that as maybe some qualification. As I said, I'd be thrilled to work with either one of these folks. Thank you.
Agree with Charlie that we're in the delightful position that we really can't make a bad choice here. So either one, I think, would serve very admirably on the council. Thank you.
Yeah, again, I just restate that all four candidates were very interesting and intriguing. And I think the counts, the town wins with any one of those being selected. And I certainly, just being recorded, I certainly would strongly encourage three candidates that are not selected to remain engaged with the town. There's, there's committees, and there's groups, and there's a lot of ways that you can influence town actions that way. So, thanks.
Yeah, excellent point, then. So I really don't have anything additional to add to my earlier comments. I think we had a great four candidates, and I think any, either of the two who are left would be great, would serve well. Thanks.
Cast their ballots. Let's do this. Welcome, everybody, to the November 18th Town Council Meeting. At the record read, that the entire Town Council is present at this time. We'll do the Pledge of Allegiance.
Of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At which point in time, I need a motion to approve the agenda?
Moved.
For a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the ayes have it. At this time, is there any public comment on any item on the agenda? Hearing none, I'll move to, is there a motion to approve the minutes of the October 21st Town Council Meeting? All in favor?
Aye.
Any ayes have it? Approval of the minutes of the November 8th informational work session?
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any ayes have it? I'm just, I'm just, I'm just smiling. Approval of the minutes of the November 8th closed session? All in favor?
Aye.
Any ayes have it? At this point in time, okay, I need a motion for the Town Council to approve Margaret Peggy Hartman to the Town Council.
Move to approve.
Is there a second? This is a second.
Second.
Discussion? If any?
I would just like to welcome you to the Town Council. It's great to have you, and we had some wonderful candidates, and I'm very pleased that you were selected and look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I echo those, those comments there, Peggy. Welcome aboard. The, the town is built to have six council member and mayor, and looking forward to serving with you.
Thank you, I'm looking forward to it.
Glad to have you with us. I'm particularly pleased to increase the diversity of the council. I think that's a great thing. I look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Mr. Frank?
Yeah, I mean, I echo what everyone said, and we had, we had four great candidates, and I'm thrilled that, you know, you were picked.
Best but not least, Valerie.
Oh, yeah, the quality of the candidates was absolutely outstanding and welcome aboard. And if there's any way that I can help you get acclimated to be in a Town Council member, please don't hesitate to ask and welcome. Congratulations.
Okay, we have a motion to approve that, and we have a second, all in favor, say aye.
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 And the ayes have it. Now on your part of our ayes and our motions and everything else. So you'll be sitting there while we're doing this COVID kind of meeting? I'm sorry, sir. That was next on my agenda, thank. No, that's why you're here, Larry. I'm going to swear in the new council person.
Yes, yes.
Okay. If you don't mind, let's see after me. I'm Margaret Hartman. Do swear or affirm as the case may be. Do swear or affirm as the case may be. That I will support the Constitution of the United States. And I will support the Constitution of the United States. And that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the State of Maryland. And I will be faithful and faithful. And support the Constitution and laws thereof. And support the Constitution and laws thereof. And that I, and that I will, to the best of my skill and judgment. And that I will, to the best of my skills and judgment. Diligently and faithfully, without partiality or prejudice. And faithfully, without partiality or prejudice. Keep the office of Town Council. Support the Constitution and the laws of the state. And the Constitution and the laws of the state. Congratulations.
Thank you.
We were dropping down every other person. We were putting, we were bringing every other person down because of COVID, but if you'd like to, that.
And that's up to you, I didn't know you wanted to sit over by the sheet. You'll take it?
Yeah.
Here we go, all right.
Okay, very good. I just want to say before I move on to the, the public, we had a very, very interesting, very fruitful meeting before here where we were able to interview four town residents for the Town Council vacancy. And we had four outstanding citizens apply. We, it was very easy chore for the council, as there would have been no real strong choice. But Peggy Hartman did come out ahead, and we have a new councilwoman. So the town is blessed, and I thank you for applying Peggy, and I thank the council and your good judgment. So let's proceed. Okay, we have, the, the town administrators of report, before we go to council, do you, anything you wanted specifically? Hey, Holly?
No, just after questions, I do have a map that our town engineer provided in regards to the flooding that I can show once questions are complete.
Okay, so you're gonna, okay, so I'll begin council questions, I'll, I'll start again with Keith.
Thank you, Mayor. I do have a couple just questions here. One, on item number two, the federal dredge. That's great, great news that we got some additional funding there, a lot of additional funding, so that's wonderful. Can you remind me, does that cover now the entire cost?
That's correct, 100% of the cost to the town will be reimbursed by Maryland Department of Natural Resources Waterway Improvement Funding.
Excellent, all right, thank you very much. And then one other quick question. The, where it is, under events, the Christmas market, can you tell us just a little bit about what that is? That's new this year.
Sure. So the town is holding our annual Light Up the Town event, and we've added this year a Christmas market to provide an outdoor market for residents to join and gather as part of an effort with economic development. So we have approximately 10 local vendors who have already signed up to provide items for citizens to purchase. We also have the North Beach Volunteer Fire Department, who will be bringing Christmas trees for purchase as well. We'll have Santa there, treats, carolers, so it'll be a very nice evening for residents to enjoy.
Yeah, sounds great, thank you very much.
No questions this evening, thank you.
No questions, Holly, thank you.
I've got a couple of quick questions. The, actually, just staying on the flooding, I want to thank, just thank you, you guys, for the work that you did in answering some of the questions that we had. We were able to get back to folks on C Street and others, and wow, what an event. The special task tax district, can you just high level provide the outline for that? Because this was something we had talked quite a bit about, and there were a couple of variables. I'm just curious where this landed.
In terms of the project, or that, where we are with the special?
How we're sharing the costs, I think specifically, was what we were debating there.
Okay, so the Town, Town Council and the Board of County Commissioners executed an MOU to start the project, which was petitioned by the Highlands HOA. They were in full support of connecting sewer connectivity to replace some of the private sewer connections there. So the county will be completing the project. The town will be purchasing the connections from the county for the town residents. And the town residents will pay the town in a, in a plan that the Town Council can review and decide upon in the future. Right now, the next step for the county is to have a special tax district hearing. So that is tentatively set for December 14th, and I had just heard that it's actually not going to take place here at Town Hall. It's going to be at the Northeast Community Center. So I will be posting information on that as soon as I have that finalized with the county for citizens to attend.
Yep. Cool, good work on that, too, that's, that's been on the list for a while, so that's very exciting, keep that moving. Thanks.
Peggy? Any questions of Holly on the, on the town administrators' report? And Valerie?
Yeah, Holly, I have a few questions. Actually, following up on what Charlie, I was gonna ask about the special testers district also. And my question is, will, for the Northeast Community Center Town Hall with the county commissioners, would those affected residents in the Highlands get like a letter or something specifically inviting them?
Yes. From the county.
That's great to hear, you know, that's great communication. Going up to number two with the federal dredge, based on the flooding events that we had recently, do we know how the dredge spoil site held up? Was there any changes, because I know it's been refurbished? How did it hold up after the flooding? Any changes there, any estimate changes based on the flooding that occurred regarding the dredge?
Regarding the, the removal of containment material and flooding?
Or the dredge spoil site itself, the physical extent of the dredge spoil site?
Yes. I'm not aware of any damages from the flooding, but I, I know Jay is on the call, and he could answer that if I'm incorrect. Jay, are you there?
Yeah, I just wanted to be, make sure that there was nothing, no emergencies that would preclude us from starting, you know, doing the dredge.
Yeah, there are not.
And all that, based on what happened.
That's correct.
Next, if we turn to the next page, my next question, not getting into too much of the flooding, but here it says the town provided a list of costs incurred. What is that, what are the costs that we incurred due to the flooding event up to, we're 29?
The main cost incurred was actually labor cost and cleanup. So we totaled close to $15,000 in costs that the town responded and submitted that to the county for hopeful funding.
Okay, I just wasn't sure, you know, what, what that, that makes a lot of sense, overtime or what have you. And then finally, in the grants, in seven, it says projects totaling 150,000, which projects are those?
That is related to the Walkable Community Advisory Group. We pulled out three projects, if I recall, it was in my last town administrators' report, but basically they're all opening gateways to increase walkability in town. And it was submitted to the county and now to the state.
Okay, that's all I had, thank you.
Thank you. Holly, did you?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. So there's been a lot of conversation about our recent flooding events, and so I just wanted to provide the attached map that our town engineer had put together in response to some surveys after the flooding. And first, I would like to provide an opportunity for Jay. I see, Jay, you are on the line and unmuted. If you could provide a kind of big picture view of what you saw in the field related to the flooding, and then we will turn it over to Wayne to present this map.
Sure, thank you. And, and so I tried to figure out how to unmute, but Valerie, the, this oil site did fill up with tide water when, when the tide was up, but then it, it also went out through the weir, so it's, it's fine, it's still ready to go, no damage. But in a nutshell, this storm, for the older residents in town, it was very similar to Isabel. And for the newer residents, probably haven't seen especially an unnamed event with such a tidal surge. A lot of the beach area, everything north of Veterans Park, really north of Windward Keys, all the way to North Beach is level ground, and that was the most affected area. Brownies Beach was the other one, we spent a couple days there, actually hauled out two and a half dumpsters full of debris and trees, and, and most of it was biodegradable, we lost in the woods, but some of it was tires and trash and picnic tables. We came from the reports within 1.9 feet, almost two feet, of levels of Isabel, so it's a good reference for new residents, what you saw, the tidal flooding. If they ever call for a four plus above tide, four feet or higher than the mean tide, you can pretty much expect the same thing, it's a good learning lesson. Another, the way I figured it, another 18 inches maximum, maybe even a foot, we would have breached the jetty wall, and then everything north of Windward Key basically would have, would have succumbed to some water, so in that area, as we all know, the, everything stormwater wise exhausts into the bay, so those storm drains work both ways, even with the wall intact, as the tide overcomes the storm drains, they backfeed, if you will, into all the low lying areas. And there's no way to stop that. We were lucky that we didn't get a lot of rain, it could have been worse, believe it or not. So I just wanted to pass that on, that, you know, everything worked, the pump station worked, which is really designed for rainwater, not to overcome a tide, although we're looking into some other options on that. And if you found a safe place, or you had a high tide mark on your fence, you had some kind of reference point, keep that in mind the next time this happens, because it'll happen again, so you kind of know where to move vehicles and what to be prepared for. And really, that's about it. We didn't suffer any damage to some wet wells, our two lowest ones being Fishing Creek and B Street. They never were overcome by the tide like they were in Isabel. But we did have some damage to the boardwalk and some damage to the beats, and a lot of cleanup. That was most of our effort. We tried to help out citizens that had some specific storm damage, that we got rid of a few trees and different things, so that's about it.
And Mayor, before I ask Wayne to present this map, if I could just remind citizens that there is an app, it's called My Coast. We've sent it out a couple times on eBlast, it's linked on our town website. But basically, you can submit, you create a free account, this is set up through the State of Maryland DNR. You create a free account, and you can upload your images of, of flooding directly, and it'll be linked to Chesapeake Beach. So please upload your images, we've received some in Town Hall, and we will get those uploaded into this app, but please download that and upload them.
We, Ms. Valerie?
What is up, we're gonna hear from Wayne, then I'm gonna see if the council has any questions on this here.
Wayne, are you available to present your map here, please?
Sure, I am. Thank you, Holly, I appreciate that. So the map that you're viewing here, the red line on here is the key, of, of, key of what we want to look at. There, this is a, a map that shows general, different levels of flooding, but the red line is what we want to look at. So post-storm, you know, we visit the site, we visit several locations in town, and we place marks where we believe where it looked like the high tide up mark was. Some of them north of C Street and 31st, some down, some down by Advers, some down by Mears Avenue. So we could identify and shoot the elevations of the flood that occurred on 10/29 and 10/30. The red line you see is that elevation that we shot, which The red line you see is that elevation that we shot, which is generally somewhere around elevation four. I think Jay mentioned, yeah, if you see a four plus tide, this is what's, what it looks like. That's correct. It's generally around elevation four. So the red line you see on this plan, this map of a town equates to elevation four. So what I would expect is that, you know, as we analyze the, the pictures and we do more surveys, this map actually helps us guide our survey work into finding where the floods were and confirm what we think, what we know. As move forward in this project, as well as some of the flood residency work we're doing, this was a pretty helpful tool. So if you're below elevation four, you're in this red area. You're the person that Jay was talking to when he said, keep this in mind, future storms come through unnamed or whatever they are. That you see forecasting for a four foot tide, you know where to move your cars to and things of that nature. So this is the beginning framework of that map that we're, we're working on. It's based on field data from October twenty nine.
Thank you, Wayne.
Okay, starting with Valerie, I'll see, do you have any questions on this new information we got from Wayne and, and or Jay?
Um, yeah, I was wondering, do we have any photos and a map of the flooding as it occurred?
We do have.
That we can share?
Images.
With, um, the residents? I mean, we often see maps and we talk about flooding, but I think it helps to put a photo, a visual to what we're talking about. So my understanding is that this is a four point five foot flood event. And so I guess that would be the Marina parking lot. That would be, it looks like two sixty one in the marsh.
Correct.
That's, that looks like the boardwalk, then the entrance to the railway trail and Twenty Eighth Street.
And so we've all seen pictures of North Beach, too. It, that is, was really eye opening.
We, I mean, even as, as we get the comprehensive plan, when it is passed, if it is passed with whatever changes from planning and zoning. You'll see maps of the potential flooding that could occur. And I think when you see the photos, it helps to put it into specific relief as to what we're talking about. Um, there were also photos of like the waves coming in on, on Bay from Park, Brownies Beach. You can, you can see the waves in those photos. And it was up until the cliff face. And I forgot to ask Jay, but you know, he mentioned damage at the boardwalk. And that would be one of those results. So also if we're talking about trying to either stabilize the cliff there at the boardwalk or do something with the trees between the boardwalk and the bay. You'd have to obviously have something that is, that's be, be a water resilient. And if we're talking about like putting a, a little park in the, on Twenty Ninth Street near Mamaluchia's. Again, that park would have to be resilient to water because we didn't see an image of it, but Mamaluchia's parking lot was flooded. Um, drastically flooded up until where, if you're familiar with Mamaluchia's, where the, uh, propane tanks are. The propane tanks at one point were halfway underwater. And so, um, just if we're gonna put a little pocket park there, we need to have it resilient and be able to withstand that sort of water. If you listen to the public hearing for the comprehensive plan, um, someone, um, mentioned, I think in your neighborhood, Peggy, about it was the wave action. And someone brought that up. I think it was the HOA president, but I don't want to misspeak. And, you know, we need to be able to deal with that also, the wave action. And that's a wave action that's gonna hurt Brownies Beach. And so I'd encourage you to do what Holly said, you know, use that app that we can provide for the state, but give pictures also of where the flooding is because, you know, that's why I asked about the dredge spoil site. You're not sure where these high waters, what they're gonna affect and how they're gonna affect it. The state is putting a lot of money into our dredge, and so we need to know if the refurbishing of the dredge spoil site worked as expected. And so I hope it helps to see photos of what flooding looks like instead of just having a map or talking about it. So when you see the comprehensive plan, which we're all talking about. And Chris Jakubiec presents those GIS based flooding maps. When he talks about a certain level of sea level rise, this might give you an idea of what's going to happen and where. And so, thank you very much.
Any comments, Peggy, on what was just presented?
I would, I would like to second what Valerie said because, you know, we talk about flooding, we talk about what's gonna happen. It's theoretical. And seeing the photos moves it right from theoretical to, well, this happened last month. So I think, I think that is a great idea.
Thanks. Thank you. And Charlie? Yeah, a couple of things. First of all, Jay or, or Wayne, help me understand, this was a four and a half foot flood event. This, that's what, that's what Valerie said, and I think that's what I heard Wayne say. Is that, do I have that correct?
Either or can answer. Yeah, but basically that means four and a half foot above your regular tide, Charlie. Does that make sense?
It does, but that, and that's, this is what I'm trying to understand because I feel like we may want to discuss some sort of, of, of an alert system. And so understanding what the parameters, when you would choose to issue an alert, that would be very helpful to understand. So Jay, I know you're, you know, you're a big fisherman. So is there an app that sort of says to you, hey, it's four and a half feet or it's above normal? Where, where do you, where does one find that information? I mean, I'm sure Noah has it, but how, how does a normal citizen get it?
There, there are, and we can look into that. Maybe even I'll get with Holly and, and we can post some links on the website. I have about four apps that not only show seven days in advance, but they, they also do live timing with some live buoys. And there are two in the bay. So I'll, I can follow up on that. That's not a bad idea and suggest some, they're free apps and that way maybe the citizens can look ahead beyond the regular TV and weather.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I, I personally would love to, would love to have that. So that's good. So thank you for that. The second thing is I am curious about those photos. So I know that we have a boatload, no pun intended, more photos than that. And I know I promised to send some to you and didn't, so I apologize for that. Would it make sense for us to have us, an area on the website? Or, and I don't want to overstate this, but some pictures up out here, uh, somewhere away to, you know, Valerie made the point, it's one thing to see a map, it's another thing to see, you know, that little picture of Marina Rest was pretty dramatic. And we got some pictures of cars underwater and whatnot. Is there an opportunity here to capture those photos and put them in front of the citizens?
Yes, and, and we really need to use this app because it's, it's what's gonna allow us to have the information wherever everyone is and everyone can access it. So I would say, and, and encourage citizens to please download this, upload the, the photos. If they don't want to do that, they can send them to Town Hall and we will put them in the app and make that available.
Okay, that's good. So there'll be something on the website that sort of aggregates all the, 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 the people uploading stuff. So I will definitely, I mean, there's lots of people I can follow up with. Cause a lot of the walkability folks were taking pictures and it, it's pretty remarkable. I think that's, that's all I have. I'm sure other people will, will follow up, but thanks to Wayne and Jay for, for the information. This was great.
Thank you. Larry?
No further questions. I, I will offer some additional comments when we come to the climate change advisory group on this issue.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. I just want to take the opportunity, comment on the efforts the town, the town is making here. Want to emphasize the education of the public on what does happen with these surges is really important so that people can be prepared. The reality of all of this, this kind of thinking of the big picture, we're not gonna suddenly wake up in the morning and be perpetually underwater. Rather, um, we're gonna have a series of storm caused incursions that are gonna progressively get worse. It'll had, you know, this, it'll progressively get worse as the decades pass. The, these waters will recede. And the town with this, with this issue should be considering cleanup plans. You know, mud on public areas and debris. I know Jay deals with that already. Mitigation of, of the flooding itself. And I've been asking around and I don't know if anybody has a magic wand for that. Just my comments on that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And Keith?
Thanks. I, I don't have any additional comments.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you, Holly, Jay and Wayne. Public Works Administration report, we've read Jay's report. If we have any questions, I'll, I'll, I'll begin with Keith on the way around.
No questions.
Thank you.
No questions for Jay. Thanks.
Larry?
Holly? Peggy? Valerie?
Uh, just one, you mentioned damage to the boardwalk, Jay. Um, what happened? Or, well, probably flood related, obviously, but what needed to be replaced?
It, it was two top rails and some pickets. And basically they weren't, and they were probably the next ones to go in a regular replacement. Anyway, they were kind of on the dry rotted side. So the wave action snapped them off and beat them loose. There was really no structural damage to any of the substructure and all that, although some water did overcome the south side of the boardwalk where it goes into Brownies Beach. You know, it was all the way up to the pump station there. So, uh, we, we really got lucky on that one, but nothing major. It was more cleanup was most of the effort spent on the beach itself.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. What a reclamation treatment plant report. We've read John's report. Do we have any questions of John? If so, I'll begin with, with Valerie. Is John a little one to call?
Yes.
Okay, I'll, I'll start with Valerie.
Hey, John, how are you?
Oh, pretty good.
Well, that's good. Um, unless there's anything specific you want to bring our attention to, my question would be this regarding the October twenty ninth, twenty twenty one event. In a way was, I would think this would be an unusual event for you in that it really was not a rain event. It was a flood and water event with wind coming in due east. It wasn't a nor'easter. There wasn't a lot of rain. How, I'll just say it sort of like plainly, how, how did the wastewater treatment plant do in such an event where there's not rain, but it's all the stormwater that you had to deal with?
Well, like you said, it was a different, different scenario for us. The flow that we got was overwhelmingly hydraulic. Just straight out flow consistently for hours and hours on time. That twenty ninth was the worst. It just seemed like, uh, we did about three, three point four million that day. That came in within twenty four hours and the hydraulically as fast as it came in, it just, that's a different, different type of scenario at the plant. We filled the surge tank up pretty quick. We put about one four million over there within twenty four hour, just about under twenty four hours. The pumps were doing about three thousand gallons a minute straight on for twenty four hours. And then we were feeding the filters about one point three million a day. But I didn't want to push the filters because the filters, if I put more filters in there, four more flow into the filters, we probably would have lost, lost some of the filters. So we knew we could take that much in it. And that's what's, we, what we did was we had to bypass some of the filters. We, we did about one million within three days into Chesapeake Bay. Now, this was treated, so it, it wasn't any type of spill, which we were trying to avoid the whole time. All, all the tests and everything were done on it. We had added more banks of UV disinfections. So everything that we bypassed was going into UV disinfections. We followed that up with testing and all and everything panned out where we didn't lose any type of major solids on a, which would have been a spill. SSO. But we did get a learning curve on what the flows were like coming in and what the plant can handle. That was a pretty good thing. Now we just gotta figure out a couple, a couple more things to try to improve, you know, some of the flows coming in there where we, what we can do with it.
Well, John, I think you're, you and your staff are to be commended. The fact that there were no spills is quite remarkable. And I'll say, if I understood at the beginning of your description of the event, that you had a flow of three point four million gallons. How does that compare to what you normally have to show the magnitude of a non-rain event that was just a, a flood event? So you, you mentioned three point four million. What is your normal?
That's in twenty four hours. Normally our flows are running about eight hundred thousand gallons a day. So.
So if my math is proper, eight hundred goes into three point four. So you're talking four times as much water, slightly more than four times as much water as normally comes into the plant. You were able to handle it. There were no spills and it was used as a learning lesson. I say, bravo. Well done.
Well, if you, if you read my, the one part of the report, we, we did a lot of tricks of the trade to get to that, but.
That's because you're a magician.
Well, we, like I said, that's a good learning thing and that'll set the bar for, you know, future references. Then hopefully we can come up with some better ideas to improve it.
As always, my, my request would be as we move into the next budget cycle, by all means, just let us know what you need to keep succeeding. Okay?
Oh, I definitely will.
I know you will. Thanks, John.
Thank you. Peggy, any additional questions?
Um, I just have a question for a definition. What is a split flow condition?
Um, we have a surge tank at the plant that takes off the excess flows. That tank will hold about one point six million. So on, on situations like this, we'll divert that part of the flow and split the regular flow coming in and split half of it over to the surge and half of it coming into the plant. Like I said, at one time we were doing about a little bit over three thousand gallons, sixteen hundred going into the plant and sixteen hundred going to, to the, to the surge tank. And that was a record for us.
Thank you, John. Holly?
Yeah, Larry has all my additional questions, but it, it does sound like you did a great job. So thank you for your, for your effort.
Two things, John. The one is, did the bus bar and MCC three get replaced?
We're gonna do that Monday. Everything they, the parts took a little bit, little bit longer to fabricate and we're gonna start on that Monday morning.
Okay, I just saw the date was November seventeenth. On the issue that we've been discussing here on the event, the end of October, I just wanted for the record to point out that this is the first bypass at the plant in, gosh, I can't even remember, John. How long has it been?
Oh, jeez.
Years.
I didn't really research that, but it's been a few months.
Well, it's been longer than months.
Yeah, it's, well, I can't even remember the last, that's how long it's been. I can't.
I just wanted to get that on the record that this was the first one that plants had to do in, in a very, very long time. Good job, John. Thank you.
Thank you.
My other comment's going to be, uh, thank you, John. We do appreciate you. We love you. Thanks.
Well, my, Mayor, my staff had a lot to do with it because we had to use them a lot through the nights and everything. So. We had to use them a lot through the nights and everything, so. They did also did a real good job.
You're a true leader. Thank you. And Greg?
Yeah, John, I've always appreciated your views. Your reports have gotten better and more revealing and forward thinking over the years. With the growing incursions of flooding over for the decades ahead of us. It would be important for the water reclamation plant. If they haven't been and maybe they have been to make the review of their emergency spill procedures and. Evaluate. For for these other challenges that we're going to experience down the road. Thanks.
Thank you. Keith?
Thank you.
Mayor and kudos to you, John, and your staff. Thank you very much for all your work, and I have no additional questions.
Okay, code enforcement report. We've read Connie's report. If we have any questions, I'll start with Keith.
No questions.
Right?
No questions from us at all.
Larry? No questions. Good job, Connie. Keep up the good work. Thank you. Kelly?
Yeah, ditto. No questions. Thank you.
No questions.
Valerie?
Yeah, one observation, Connie. This report seems to be much slimmer than what we normally receive. And I would say that's a direct reflection of the quality of the work that you're doing. So thank you.
Thank you, Valerie.
Thank you. Thank you, Connie. Thank you, Valerie. Town treasures report. We've read the report. If we have any questions, I'll begin with Valerie.
I was just wondering if there I've read it. And I was wondering if there's any update on the. The COVID relief funds, the 2.9 million. And when we could possibly like. Maybe set like a work session to discuss what are some of the available. Options for using such a large amount of the funds and that's only 50% of it. I still think it may maybe during the budgetary budgetary cycle, we could discuss. Like any of the shortfalls that the. Like the water park had so that they can be made whole to where they were pre COVID. And things like that. It'd be good to know what the parameters are that we're talking about. And I think the budget cycle would be a good time to do that. Other than that, it's always really good to see that we have a strong financial position. And that. I always appreciate the fact that you highlight the fact that paying off debt early has really helped our financial position. So thanks, Dale. Good job.
Thank you, Valerie. Peggy?
No questions. Thank you.
Kelly?
You know, questions, but I just I have to say that it's an impressive report. There's no, I don't, there's all the bullets are positive. So well done.
Larry? Just a couple of comments. Good job. Some of this, I think we probably ought to think about sharing in a newsletter or something with the public because this is very good news in terms of the town's financial position. I'm surprised my colleague. Valerie didn't point this out in our long term obligation, since this is one of your favorites, that that. Reduction as of June 30th, total 4.8 million, which is the decrease of 1.76. That's a 26% reduction. In our long term obligation. So good job, everyone. Thank you. Indeed. And and Greg?
No questions for Dale. Thank you.
Keith? No additional questions. Thanks.
Very good. Town engineers report. We've read Wayne's report. I I'll begin with Keith. If you have any questions?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. And no questions for Wayne. Thank you.
Mr. Morris?
Yeah, I have a question regarding the Harbor Road sewer study. I I see that this is this is separate from the Highlands and the Calvert MOU issue. And. I know we're we're looking into extending that sewer there. The sewer line there. And I I'd noticed that the state had made some comments and had emphasized. Planning to to get properties off of septic systems. So I'm on board with that. Thank you.
Thank you. And Larry? No additional questions. Thank you. And Charlie?
Well, for my old. Now now gone colleague Derek, I I just would like to get a little more specifics on 261. Wayne, you're probably tired of me asking this. What I read here sounds like good news. But what you know, what are next steps and what's it what what's it what what's sort of timing?
It is good news. We actually had our 100% CD kickoff meeting earlier this week. So we are waiting for the state on that process to provide us. The paperwork we need to get that ball rolling for the 100% construction documents review. Or submission. The 30% is into the state being reviewed. I expect them to be approved. So it all comes together and hopefully in the near future. Given the schedule we talked about with them, we're hoping end of the year or January, we'll be able to bring that to you move forward.
I'm sorry, you just the end you faded out. What you're hoping for the end of the year to?
End of the year or beginning of 22, we will bring that to town council. We're expecting. For your review to move the 100% construction documents forward.
Cool. All right. Thank you. Thanks for continuing to follow up on that. It's it's a huge project. I mean, you. It's a very significant project and we heard from everyone about it. So it's awesome. Thanks.
No comments.
Without.
Yeah, just once again, thank you, Wayne, for the flood map. I I really appreciate the look that it provides and how it compared to. Krista Kubikx that he has in the comprehensive plan. And so I look forward to, you know, you guys collaborating together on. Coming up with those strategies that are raised in the flood resiliency plan. So thank you very much.
Thank you, all.
Okay, thanks. Deputies report. Is there anybody from the sheriff's office on the call, Holly? Okay, we have read the report. If the council has any questions, I'll begin with Valerie.
I know I have no questions. Thanks. And thank you for your service.
You're welcome.
I have no questions. Thank you.
Yeah, a couple of things stick out on here. There's a. Seagate Square roommate broke down a door. Can can we have, is it acceptable for us to have a little more information about that?
I can. It's it's a domestic related issue, so we try not to put too much of personal information in there. Roommates running rooms from each other had a disagreement and he kicked the door in out of anger. So it was, he didn't. Particularly burglarize the residents. He kicked it out of anger. It was more of a destruction of property rather than any kind of burglary or things of that nature.
And you can't, it's not appropriate to share a unit number with us, I guess.
I can. I can look into it and see, but most likely no, they're not going to want us to get to really in depth details about specifically what room.
Okay, fair enough. The only other thing I had was that something I had read about a body. Woman who was found behind the CVS. Can you? Do you have more information on that or not?
Just the other day?
Yeah, it was very recent and there were no specifics. And I, you know, to be honest, I picked this up on Nextdoor. So I don't, you know, I. Not a social media fan, so I'd like maybe some facts if you have them.
Right. The the only the only thing I could think of is just the one we had a couple of days ago. It was intoxicated female. Stumbled, fell down, intoxicated, animals came and picked her up and took her to the hospital.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, no comments. Thank you for your service and stay safe.
Thank you.
Yeah. Since I've been paying attention, the town of Chesapeake Beach has enjoyed an amazing and safe partnership with the sheriff's department here in the county. I'm all on board with keeping that going. We appreciate your service. And please convey our sentiments. Everybody be safe, please.
Absolutely. Well, thank you.
Before I go to Keith, I just want to echo Mr. Morris's remarks.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Appreciate your service and no additional comments. Thanks.
Very good. Volunteer Fire Department, as always, if we have any questions, please, please send them to Larry.
I just saw for one comment here.
Please do, sir.
Holly mentioned this earlier, but at the Light Up the Beaches event, the fire department is going to be there selling Christmas trees. So come on out and enjoy the event and buy a Christmas tree. Thank you.
Spectacular. Thank you. Okay. Mayor's report. We recently had a wicked storm that hit both beach towns, you know, causing significant damage and flooding. Sea level rise is obviously a real threat to to all of us. And I just want to personally thank the planning and zoning board. For recognizing this as they drafted the town's comprehensive plan. Next. Last week, council members Bodine, Jaworski and Morris. Joining me at the groundbreaking ceremony for the new Beach Elementary School. The current school is almost 70 years old. And it was mentioned that it's the only elementary school in the county with sidewalks where children can walk to school. I'm happy to know and report that we are, you know, this town is in efforts. To improve our sidewalk access for children to the school. Lastly, I want to thank our veterans for serving our country, and I hope you all enjoy your Veterans Day. And lastly, happy Thanksgiving to all, and I look forward to seeing you at the light up of the town event. Next, I'm going to introduce instead of hearing date for. Ordinance ODS 21-7 and ordinance of the town council of Chesapeake Beach. To expand the admission and amusement tax for the town of Chesapeake Beach to include sports betting for class A1. A2, B1 and B2 licenses. I set the public hearing for December the 16th at 6:50 PM. Next, planning and zoning, I believe Larry Brown is on the call. We've read Larry's report. Larry, is there anything you want to share with the town?
Nothing in particular. We're working on wrapping this up. I've got quite a few comments to. Look at and consider how we're going to or whether we will implement and include them in the report. So there's. Quite a bit of work left to be done, but we're. Working on it.
Thank you, sir. Word of appeals, no hearing held. C box. Is John Bacon on the call? Hey, John.
So whenever you get to me.
We're at you, bud.
There you are. As as I reported last month. We're not getting oysters from the Maryland Growing Oysters Program. I learned today in a meeting with the Chesapeake Oyster Alliance that this is going to probably continue in the future. With the fact that. There are very large restoration projects going on in this state that are funded by the government. And there is extremely large increase in aquaculture, which is taking the larva and the and the spat on shell. From the petries. So the Maryland Growing Oysters Program, in my opinion, will probably fade away. And and to counter that, we have decided to work with Bobby Abner and his. Reef and his tank so that we're going to grow our own oysters. In the future, and that's next year. We took some oysters from the field trips out to the bay. Couple of days ago. And we also deposited some reef balls. I got to tell you, there were two very important things that day. One, Jay Berry allowed me to ride on his boat. Which is unusual. And even more unusual, he allowed me to drive it. Of course, when I was driving it, he had the motors turned off. So we were just sitting dead in the water. The education program for the fifth graders concluded last week. Almost 1,200 students, teachers and chaperones were able to come to our program. The new volunteer team of Sue Alexander, Megan Blake, Larry, Linda Draper, Mike Flame. Melanie Carter, Larry Ringel, Dennis and Amanda Brown and Liz Arandi. Really stepped up to make this effort possible. And during the nine years we have had this program. Over 7,500 students have attended. I got information back from one of our members that his. Children were now in college taking environmental education programs. When they had. Originally. Eight years ago, come to our trail. So that's very encouraging. And thank you.
Thank you, John. Climate Change Advisory Group, Larry? Well, we've already discussed quite a few things that fall under the Climate Change Advisory Group as a result of the flooding that occurred the end of October. The good news that I wanted to share with everybody is is the town is working on this issue. There has been established a. Committee for the flooding and sea level rise effort. We towns received the grant of $75,000 from Department of Natural Resources. As has the town of North Beach. We have a group that's working on this that includes Holly. Jay, Wayne, Chris, John Castro. And then Keith and myself are on it. We're going to be moving forward with that. Chris Jakubiak has been working on updating mapping. Showing. Vulnerable areas in our town. We will be reaching out to a group called the Eastern Shore Regional GIS to update the mapping. We will be establishing a steering committee of residents and local businesses. To help guide the efforts of this flooding and sea level rise effort. We have met a couple of times now and and we will be working on both long term and short term. Issues that the town can implement. And I am in regular contact with North Beach, who has a similar group established. Obviously, the water does not recognize a boundary between North Beach and Chesapeake Beach. So we need to work in concert with North Beach to make sure. We know what each other is doing. And that we don't do anything in one town that makes things worse than the other town. Other things I participated or I will be participating, the Maryland Chamber of Commerce is holding a virtual meeting with the MDE Maryland Department of the Environment. On Monday, November 29th, I'll be participating in that. I participated in a virtual meeting with Ben Carden, talking about climate change and things that the state can do to help local communities address the issue. And on the steering committee that I mentioned for the flooding and sea level rise, I have. I am reaching out to the local businesses to make sure that they are represented on the steering committee as well. If any of the local businesses who are listening in tonight are interested, please reach out to me and let me know. I'd be happy to discuss it with you. And I will throw it to Collier for any comments.
I think you covered it very well, Larry. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Great. Don't go anywhere, Larry. Economic development? Several things here. It was mentioned in Holly's report, the Naval Research Lab Chesapeake Bay Detachment Restoration Advisory Board held a meeting on November 10. They were updating everyone on the progress that they're looking at the. Substance. It's called PFAS. It's basically was generated by the firefighting activities, practice. Activities that they used to conduct at the site at the Naval Research Lab. It's the foam that's basically used to fight. Aircraft fires. But the contamination has been detected in several places. So they are moving forward and. I won't get into all the. Boring details, but in the hazardous waste world, there's a progression one goes through in conducting these studies. And the bad news, good news is that they have determined it is appropriate to proceed into the next phase. Of the study because indeed the contamination is there. So they will be conducting. A site inspection that the final site inspection report is expected by the end of this calendar year. And then it'll move into the next phase. Which is the remedial investigation, which is a step that they take to begin to look at the steps that can be taken to. Address the issue. There has been additional groundwater, additional water sampling done. The town has conducted their own. Sampling, excuse me. And I know Mr. Bacon has requested. That there be some additional testing done. The Navy's response during the meeting was they are looking into doing just that. Other things on economic development. The mayor mentioned the groundbreaking at Beach Elementary. The new school is scheduled open 2023. Look forward to that. And on the comprehensive plan, I just want to encourage everybody who's listening to provide comments. More comments that are received on that comprehensive plan, the better off we'll be. I'll defer to co-chair Mr. Morris for any additional comments.
Thanks, Larry. I just wanted to emphasize that the holiday season here in town has always been a very exciting time. It's always been awesome. It's a great experience for everyone. In this new Christmas market, it sounds completely awesome. And I'm looking forward to all of that stuff. So thank you.
Thank you, sir. Green Team, Valerie?
Um, yeah, you all have their reports. If you have any questions, let me know. I'd just like to highlight a few things. First, the various green team members provided comments during the public hearing for the comprehensive plan on November 9. And so that was wonderful. And if anyone else has any ideas, as was just mentioned, please provide those comments to planning and zoning regarding the comprehensive plan. Next, we're helping the Chesapeake Beach Garden Club work on a dedication of the Town Hall Bridge Buffer Garden. So if you come into the Town Hall parking lot, you'll notice where the old bridge, bridge railing is. And that's now a buffer garden and that's going to be dedicated to our dear friend Nancy Furley. And finally, I'd like to mention that once again, on March 5th, which is a Saturday, we'll have Sam Drogi here, a wildlife biologist discussing native bees and pollinators. Our next meeting for the green team is Thursday, December 9th at 6:00 PM in the Town Hall, and you will be required to wear a mask unless anything changes. So that's Thursday, December 9th, 6:00 PM. And I look forward to seeing you all. So any questions, let me know.
Thank you. Thank you, Valerie. Kellum's revitalization, Greg?
I don't have, I really have an update for that. Councilman, think you have anything you wanted to? Sure.
I will touch on one, one small item on that's related to walkability, but otherwise I can. Okay. Twin Beach opioid abuse awareness, Keith?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I have a few things. One, I just wanted to read a little bit from CNN Health because the opioid epidemic hasn't gone away. We haven't heard a lot about it as much as we were because of COVID and and other things happening in our lives, but they just released a, CDC just released a report indicating that more than 100,000, 100,000 people died of drug overdoses in the United States during the 12-month period ending April 2021, according to some, the data that they released Wednesday. That's a new record high with overdose deaths jumping 28.5% from the same period a year earlier. Nearly doubling what over the past five years. Opioids continue to be the driving cause of drug overdose deaths. Synthetic opioids, primarily fentanyl, caused nearly two-thirds of all drug overdose deaths in that 12-month period. So anyway, I just wanted to, you know, read that, that there's still a lot of people out there suffering, struggling with this, with this condition. And, you know, I'm happy to say, as you probably noticed from the sheriff's report, we seem to be bucking the trend, knock on wood, here in Chesapeake Beach. And I think that's, you know, partly due to all the efforts of our committee and all the great folks here in the county who have really been raising awareness about this over the last, you know, four years or so. And so I think it put us in a good place, but, you know, we still need to not let our guard down. We will be having a meeting December 7th, 6:00 PM. Hope to see folks there. And I also wanted to just let folks know that some of our partners, the Calvert County Health Department, Calvert Health Avenue's Recovery Center will be hosting a community conversation. Calvert County Innovations on Addressing Substance Use Disorders. And they're going to have a panel of experts there. And it's going to be from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. And it looks like there's going to be an in-person as well as a virtual component to that. So I believe Holly has that already up on our email blast for more information if anybody's interested. And with that, thank you very much.
Thank you, Keith. Charlie, walkability? Yeah, we have a lot of activity, a lot of news, not all the great. Holly's more optimistic than I am. It was a great update on 261. So, you know, that's not strictly speaking part of the walkability community group, but it's, it's nice to hear progress there along with the school. So we're excited about that. Holly talked earlier about the program Open Space. So that was the $150,000 grant. I think Valerie, you were asking about it. The projects that we are looking at there are a couple of things. One of them are a couple of the pocket parks. We, we know that they're basically shovel-ready, although flood resiliency will obviously be an issue. So that's something we'll keep in mind. And the other is the connection on the north side between Callum's Field and 26th Street. And so we're hoping to put a couple of elegant connectors in there that are currently, as we refer to them in our group, the sort of Billy Goat Trails. And so Greg, that was my, my point there because some other things that we're discussing, I'm not going to spend time on them here to enhance usability of Callum's Field. Well, now we'll also have this, this sort of natural connector into them. So I'm very excited about that. And I tip my hat to Holly because that was kind of done on short notice. Move some of those things through sort of quickly. The bad news, I consider not great news anyway, is that we did submit to State Highway, and correct me, Holly, if I have these facts wrong, for a feasibility study for the connector from Horizons to Seagate. And while I guess we're happy that they support the concept of the project, they didn't give us any money. So they suggested that we resubmit next year. So we're going to go back and maybe look at some alternatives between now and then. Of course, if if we haven't made any progress, we'll resubmit next year. Correct, correct me if I'm wrong on any of that. So I was a little disappointed in that because to me, that's a no-brainer along, along that stretch of road. You heard several people tonight talk about trying to cross 261. And I actually found it amusing that someone compared swimming without a lifeguard as a safer activity than trying to walk across Route 261. So there are some additional projects we're, we're looking at with crosswalks and that. Stay tuned for that. And then just to wrap up, we have a meeting Monday night, 22 November, 7:00 PM. Zoom information's on the town website. And I guess we're going to be 100% virtual for that, right? That is all. Thank you, Charlie. New unfinished business, new business. Town Council to consider awarding a contract to JDT Electric Incorporated in the amount of $19,121 to demo and replace two existing panels, troughs, and junction boxes and install a time clock at the water park. Funds will come from the Water Park FY22 budget. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve?
For a second.
Second.
We're going to give our new councilwoman that second for the record. Any discussion? I'll begin with Keith. We discuss this in a work session?
Yeah, no, no questions for me.
All right.
No questions.
No questions.
Valerie?
Uh, no questions.
Give a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 And the ayes have it. Next, Town Council to consider awarding a contract to Jeff Ellison Associates for three-year contract with two one-year options for the renewal for professional aquatic and risk management services per pricing provided. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve?
For a second?
Okay.
Any discussion? We can begin with, with Valerie. We discuss this in a work session?
Oh, yeah, we discussed this in a work session. Ellison Associates has been a provider to the water park previously. And the safety record for our lifeguards at the water park is really good. They do a phenomenal job and it's Ellison Associates that train them. And so I'm happy to support this.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Yeah, just a general question, Holly. What's the what's the aggregate yearly cost to the town for training? You know, staff there at the water park through this program?
Thanks. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the ayes have it. At this time of last, is there any public comment? Is there any public comment? Hearing none, I'll move to the council lightning round. I'll begin with Keith.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving and I look forward to seeing you at the lighting up of the town on, on the Sunday afterwards. Thanks.
Councilman Morris?
Yeah. If I can read this, my glasses fogging up here. I know there's been a lot of incredible hard work and patience and the incredible hard work and patience notwithstanding, it's incredible that we've just passed the 30% design milestone for that connector from Chesapeake Village onto Beach Elementary. It's been five years. And I know we've all been working really hard on that. The, the school may be completed before that connectors. The new school may be completed before that new connector is completed. And on that, I know that, I noticed that on the new school plan, they had a couple of crosswalks. That's part of that plan that the county's paying for to go in. And maybe there's something we can do to urge the county to to put those crosswalks in sooner rather than later. And I want to circle back and just thank the candidates that threw their hat in the ring for the council vacancy. And not just for the three candidates that did not get selected, but anybody in town. This is a really easy town to, there's a lot of committees and groups. And if you want to be part of things without having a super duper commitment, there's lots of ways to do it. There's a lot of areas that, that you can have a, have a small voice in affecting just a myriad of things that the town's engaged in. And looking forward to having a fantastic Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And Larry?
Welcome, Peggy. Look forward to working with you. I look forward to seeing everyone as we mentioned before, Light Up the Town, Sunday, November 28th, 4:00 PM. The initial ceremony is going to be here, then we'll move out the Callums, correct? Okay, so meet here at Town Hall and you'll see the crowds. North Beach is going to light up their town the Friday night before us, Friday, November 26th at 7:00 PM down on the boardwalk. And happy Thanksgiving, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. And Charlie? Yeah, a couple of things, a little bit of repetition here, but things that bear repeating. Welcome, Peggy. Also looking forward to working with you. I got to say one more time, thanks to Holly and Jay and Wayne. And just very specifically, because obviously a lot of good work and everyone pitching in during this flood event, but Holly and Jay and Wayne came and met with Larry and I. It had to be the Monday morning after the flood, or maybe it was Tuesday, but it was, it was pretty promptly based on an email. I mean, there were obviously, there was obviously a need to meet, but based on in direct response to an email I sent based on very reasonable but pointed questions from citizens on C Street. That's small town charm right there, in my opinion. So thank you guys for doing that. Really appreciate it. I encourage everyone to check out the MyCoast app. I wish I could say more about it. I haven't checked it out yet, but I will do that tonight. Thanks for the NRL PFAS update. That was on my list. And the last thing that I'll say is, I mean, happy Thanksgiving, all that, but also keep in mind to anyone listening, winter is coming. So make sure you have your water access prepared, your pipes prepared. A lot of homes in Chesapeake Beach are, don't have basements. It's a recipe for frozen pipes. So make sure you're taking the right precautions. Thank you.
Thank you.
And our new councilwoman?
Well, first of all, I would just like to say thank you to everyone for the wonderful welcome this evening. And I look forward to getting caught up on all of the issues and the documentation that we have here today and for the funding commission. Thank you.
Very well. Octavodine?
Yes, I also want to say congrats one more time. And the quality of our candidates, the four candidates were just, it was unbelievable. And you'll be a wonderful addition to this group. So I look forward to working with you. Like, once again, I extend any help that you want, you know, in in any chats, I'm always available. I also want to mention once again that we have the green team meeting December 9th at 6:00 PM. Also wanted to mention that the Beach Elementary School groundbreaking. Some board of education members approached me and showed an interest in having children potentially walk to school. Because Beach, the way they described it, Beach was the only school that was in an environment that would allow them to have sidewalks and to walk. And they fully understand that they would have to change their rules and bylaws to allow children to walk or bike to school. Because right now they do not allow it. Once again, Beach Elementary is the only school that would have that ability. And I forgot that, mentioned that to you. And I just wanted to make sure you got, I'm looking at Charlie, you know, I'm sorry.
You started looking at me before you started. I was like, oh, I did something wrong.
No, 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 absolutely not. I just, I forgot to mention that potential opportunity eventually. So it's the board of education that showed some real interest. It's already been mentioned about Light Up at the Town. So I look forward to seeing you all on that Sunday. And before Light Up the Town, we have Thanksgiving. So happy Thanksgiving to all.
Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the ayes have it. Everybody, we need to, you know, exit as quickly as possible so the ladies can close up and get home and get out of this environment. Thank you.